Music is really peaceful.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 5, 2024, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight. And first item of business on our agenda is for public comments. And we did have three people register for public comments for this meeting. I will call them up in the order that they registered. So first one up will be Mr. John Marshall. Each of these people will have three minutes to speak, and I believe all of them registered to speak regarding item 6D on our agenda. We'll have the public comments, and then we will continue on with our meeting. And then when we get to item 6D, we will discuss and bring into all of their comments and address them like we normally do, as if it were a public hearing. That's my understanding. If that's correct. So, Mr. Marshall, welcome, and please just state your name and address.
John Marshall, 119 Cracker Court, Eagleville, Tennessee. And I currently serve as the Chair of the Rutherford County Conservation Board, which also oversees the Lane Agri Park facilities and property, which brings me here tonight. June 17, 2021, the Rutherford County Conservation Board was approached by representatives of a development on Gresham Lane to modify an existing drainage adjustment onto the county-owned Lane Agri Park property. Not being provided with any information before the meeting, several questions and concerns about the potential negative impact on our property were raised. The Board asked the group to return with answers to our questions at our next monthly meeting. We did not hear from anyone until April 18, 2024. That's June of 21 to April of 2024. No additional information or requests. Before our April 18 Conservation Board meeting, the county was notified of a request to close Gresham Lane. Upon further review, it was discovered that work had already begun to install the drainage pipes that, at the time, would also increase water volume onto the property with potentially adverse effects. They were instructed to receive permission before proceeding with the modifications to our board. On April 18, the Board was asked to entertain a request once again to modify the drainage adjustment and a potential increase in water runoff onto this property. The representatives provided new calculations, a second time, new calculations, that were different from the original proposal that would not have been provided before the meeting. Again, we expressed multiple concerns and asked for more information to be presented at our next meeting. On May 16, the representatives appeared before the Conservation Board, presented new calculations for a third time without providing these revisions ahead of time for appropriate review and analysis. Based on the new calculations, it became clear that our board and planning representatives with the county remain in disagreement on the accuracy of the true impact on the property. The county has hired a third-party engineer to evaluate the CIA's detention and stormwater calculations in the original Glendale subdivision retention and stormwater calculations. We are deeply concerned about the potential impact on the property and facilities, which could alter how we utilize this space to serve all residents of Rutherford County, including those who live in Murfreesboro. I would plead with the Commission to defer to item D until we receive the report from the third-party engineer and know all the potential impacts this decision could have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Next, we will hear from Mr. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Michael Shirley. I live at 5089 Lytle Creek Road, Murfreesboro. I am the Vice Chairman of the Rutherford County Conservation Board, and I want to thank Mr. Marshall for a rapid but succinct summary. So I'm going to speak a little bit quieter, slower, because he has the facts. And I just want to point out a couple of things related to his timeline. At no point in the times that we've met with our applicants have we told them, "No, we will not accept the extra water onto our property." What we have said at each time is "not yet." We need, just like you, when we're trying to do the best we can to fulfill our obligations to serve the citizens of Rutherford County, when new information, we don't want to ever make a snap judgment based on information that we haven't had a chance to review, especially when our county engineer has told us that there could be greater impact than what the application before us said. And as Mr. Marshall pointed out, we've received three different calculations. This could negatively impact the way that we utilize our property, and so we weren't comfortable in accepting that water at this time. So we have given the applicants our concerns multiple times, and our concerns have not been addressed, and I would suggest that they've been willfully ignored, because you can go out there and see that all of the work is already done. All they're waiting for now is to make their final pipe attachments, and so they've already done the work, and they haven't had approval from us to send more water our way. So I would just ask that you ask, that you follow and require the applicant to follow the protocols that are set in place to ensure that property rights are protected. This is setting a precedence if we allow them to just do what they want to do without their approvals. Mr. Marshall and I are happy, if you also suspend the rules, to allow us to talk later today. We're happy to answer any questions to, that you may have regarding this whole process. And I would invite you out to the Lane Agri Park this Saturday for Free Fishing Day, which is from eight, starts at 8:00. There's 300 pounds of catfish that we released this week out there, so bring your kids and come join us for Fishing Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. And we will next hear from Pettis Reed.
I'm Pettis Reed from 11795 Mount Pleasant Road, Rockvale, Tennessee. I'm also a County Commissioner and Chairman of the County Planning Commission, and also Chairman of the County Ag Advisory Council, who also works with projects there at Lane Agri Center. The reason I'm here tonight is same as those two individuals who has presented this evening, and also to support their committee who has dealt with this pretty handily. We were surprised to see that there was already work that had already begun, and we hadn't even heard anything about it. I work very closely, of course, with our Planning Commission, and we are concerned about the water that will go into this pond. This pond is a vital part of Lane Agri Center. It has become a part of the community. It's become a part of Murfreesboro. And just as Mr. Shirley has said here tonight, come Saturday, if you have the opportunity to drop out there, you'll see. You'll see families there with children fishing, and the majority of them will come from the Murfreesboro area. This pond also is a part of our education program that we have there at Lane Agri Park. It's something that we're quite concerned as far as this water. Will this water be too much for that pond? Will it affect our programs? Will it affect this pond? If you know anything about farm ponds, which this one is pretty much the way we like to keep it, where we use it as a form of showing people what a pond should be. If there's too much water coming from this development, we have a problem. So we're just asking that this be deferred, 6D be deferred, until we can get this third-party, get their ideas, and seeing what it looks like compared to the other two that are saying one way and one way the other. So we're just asking you tonight to defer from the reasons that we've given. Thank you for your, this opportunity to be before you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, that is the end of our public comments for tonight. Next, we will move on to approve our minutes of the May 15, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, which we had a chance to review ahead of time. If anybody had any changes or questions on that, and otherwise, we'd be ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second on the minutes. Ms. Jacob, Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, then we have public hearings and our recommendations for the City Council. Two items there tonight. First item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 10.33 acres located at 3061 and 3071 New Salem Highway. Philip and Tammy Dodd and Corner Stone Freewill Baptist Church are the applicants. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. The annexation study area, before you deny it, consists of two parcels located south of New Salem Road, just west of Vetter and Parkway. Both of the applicants have submitted a written petition to the city requesting annexation of their property into the city. The first property is 2.53 acres at 3061 New Salem Highway, owned by Mr. Philip and Ms. Tammy Dodd. This property is currently developed as a single-family residence with a large accessory structure. And then the 5.1 acres located at 3071 New Salem Highway is owned by Cornerstone Freewill Baptist Church and is currently developed as an existing institutional use, currently a church. So TDOT's New Salem Highway Project Phase III is scheduled to overtake the septic fields of these properties. For that reason, staff recommended that they pursue annexation into the city so that they would have access to city sanitary sewer, and that TDOT is actually going to extend that sanitary sewer with the wide-in-end project, so sewer will become available to those properties once they're in the city. So the total annexation area is approximately 10.3 acres and includes no additional right-of-way for the city. The owners of the property have not submitted a companion zoning, so this will be zoned RS-15 per our zoning ordinance. This, the annexation study area is within our urban growth boundary. It's contiguous to our existing city limits on three sides, and it's also within our service infill area. So it checks all of those boxes for the city. Staff has prepared, worked with other city departments to prepare a plan of services. The plan of services was included in your packet for this meeting. So this is, with its relatively close proximity to the city, it will be relatively easy to serve. There is one caveat to that. There will need to be a fire hydrant installed on the property line between the two properties. That's just to keep our ISO rating consistent for the fire department. We've worked with the fire department and talked to CUD. CUD has added that fire hydrant as a part of a waterline relocation project that they're completing prior to TDOT's road widening project. So that water, that fire hydrant will be installed in late 2025 is the current timeline. You know, that, that could change a little bit either way, but the fire department is aware of that. Currently, this will be served from the closest hydrant, which would be 700 feet away from the properties. Staff is supportive of the annexation request for the following reasons. The subject property is contiguous to the existing city limits. It is located within the city's urban growth boundary and within the service infills area. Services can be extended to the subject property upon annexation, and the property will be served by sanitary sewer with the New Salem Highway Road Construction Project. Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, after which it will need to make a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Donovan before we open the public hearing?
So I have a curiosity question. When you have a, when we annex a piece of property and we're saying it's going to be RS-15 because we don't have a companion zoning request, but you've got a church on a piece of property that will be RS-15, are we just taking into consideration that it was single-family residential in the county, and if they've got a variance there, then we're just taking that variance on? Is that the way that works?
Churches can go in RS.
I know, but they usually have to co, have to have a variance.
Yeah, so, so the way the zoning ordinance is set up for zoning without a request to rezone it upon annexation is they get assigned to, to a residential district that is as close, which in this case is RS-15. You know, I would say, I would defer to Mr. Hankins as far as how we're taking the property. You know, I think we take it as it's approved in the county with any, you know, variances or special use permits they would have issued under their ordinance.
Yeah, the short answer is if they have, if they have any approvals from the county level, those would essentially transfer over into the city. And if there's any sort of grandfathering, it'll just be considered a lawfully established non-conforming use to the extent that it needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
And if they wanted to be a conforming use, they would just apply for a variance in the city?
That's great, yeah. Go through whatever city procedure we would have for their use. Or if they needed, if they wanted to seek a rezoning or special use permit or something to, to bring them into current compliance, they would have that option. Or if they're going to stay just the way they are, they could be, like I said, just, you know, compliant.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, we will open the public hearing on this item and ask if there are any, anyone that would like to come forward to speak regarding this item tonight, either for or against. Again, if you come to the podium, you'll state your name and address, and you do have three minutes to make your comments to the Planning Commission. And we always ask that all comments be made directly to the Planning Commission, not to other people out in the audience or staff, et cetera. Make your comments to us. We'll listen to everything, anybody that wants to speak on the item. And then at the end of the public, your public comments, we'll discuss the item as a commission and try to answer any questions that we can. So if anybody would like to come forward to speak on this item, public hearing is open. Please step forward. Anybody? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and see if Planning Commission has any other questions or comments, or if we're ready for a vote.
There is none, I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water? Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, item passes, and we will move on to item B. This is consideration of the City of Murfreesboro Greenways, Blueways, and Bikeways Master Plan. The City of Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department is the applicant. And, okay.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Singer. I'm the Assistant Director for the Parks and Recreation Department. In 2023, the City of Murfreesboro consulted with Kimley Horn to update our existing Greenway, Blueway, Bikeway Master Plan. The plan serves as a guide for implementation for transportation and recreation connectivity through the city. The primary goals are to promote existing routes as well as the construction of new access points by identifying community needs. So the original plan was done in 2013, and it laid the groundwork to help us identify and coordinate improvements along this trail. I know I don't have to tell this group that we've seen a lot of growth here in Murfreesboro in the past 10 years, and so with that, it was necessary to provide an update to this master plan. We did present this at the public hearing in depth, and I do have Mr. Kevin Tilbury here that I was going to introduce with Kimley Horn, and he's just going to run through a couple of the slides really quick, just to refresh your memory if you have any questions. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Kevin Tilbury.
Thanks, Rachel, and thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to be real brief. I know you have a full agenda. We went through the full presentation at the last hearing, and so we're not going to do that tonight. Instead, we're just going to give you a real high-level overview. So yes, of course, Murfreesboro has experienced significant growth in the last 10 years, and in case you haven't heard, it's still popular, and it's going to continue to experience growth. And so what the plan did is we sort of took a look back, and we tried to understand what growth has happened since the plan was adopted in 2013, but then we also looked forward to understand where future growth is going to happen. And so we sort of played a connect-the-dots, where we tried to understand where the new neighborhoods will be, where the existing and future destinations are, like schools, shopping, recreation, all those types of things, and then aligned it with some of the opportunities, so the continuous rights of way, the, a lot of the, you know, the significant water features that you have running through the city. And so the end result is a plan that, there are about 40 projects in total that are designed to completely connect the community, both existing and future neighborhoods, and it's, it's been prioritized. So you've got about 15 projects that have already been committed that you'll see built, get built in about the next eight years. So your staff has done a tremendous job of making sure that these projects get programmed and funded and implemented. And then beyond that, we have about 10 projects that are scheduled to be implemented in the next, say, eight to 15 years, and then a longer list of projects that are programmed, either, they're either sort of lower priority, or they're going to take a long time to sort of program, fund, and build over the 25-year horizon. And so I will be more than happy to go into detail and talk about some of the projects or the process, if you'd like, but try to keep it brief, since you've already seen the presentation. And instead, I'll just be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tilbury. Does anybody have any questions or want to hear anything more about any of the specific projects that are going on? Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll open the public hearing and ask if we have anybody from the audience that would like to come forward and speak regarding this updated master plan. Anybody? Okay. We will close the public hearing. Did you have more you wanted to add? Did I, did I stop you too soon, Mr. Tilbury?
No.
Okay.
It's easier when you go ahead all day.
Good, great. We love it. Okay, any other questions or comments from the Planning Commission regarding the updated master plan?
If there is none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water? Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes our public hearings for tonight. We're moving on to staff reports and other business, and we do have four items there. The first item is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a landscape buffer easement located on property along Wilkinson Pike. Reagan Smith Associates is the applicant. Mr. Barbie, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This next item on your agenda tonight is for the consideration of the abandonment of a portion of a landscape buffer easement. This buffer easement was originally recorded back in 2017 as a part of a previous zoning, zoning application. Since then, that project didn't move forward, and the Clary Park Development zoning has been approved since. With that zoning and site plan, the area that's necessary for that buffer is not quite as large as it was before, and the current development shows construction within a portion of that easement. We've reviewed the plan, and the berm and buffer that was shown has been constructed so that it is not going to be in conflict with this area of easement that's shown on your first page in the hatch pattern. Therefore, staff is in support of this request to abandon the portion of the easement. If the Planning Commission were to concur with this approval, staff would request the following conditions. If approved by City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary, including but not limited to any exhibits and legal descriptions for the legal department to prepare legal instruments to formally modify the proposed easement in question. The legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department. The second condition is the applicant will also be responsible for recording these instruments, including payment of the recording fees. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission regarding this abandonment of the portion of the landscape buffer easement?
Make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water? Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, our next item is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a detention pond easement located on property along Trust Drive. SEC Inc. is the applicant. Mr. Barbie?
Good evening again. As you stated, this is a request to abandon a portion of a drainage easement. Let's see, Donald, or Richard, if you can flip over to the fifth page, there's a better exhibit that shows the portion that is being requested to be abandoned. There we go, perfect. The area in red is the section that is being requested for abandonment. Our project engineer has reviewed the request and has been able to confirm that the drainage for this system will be contained within the yellow area, and that the red area that's requested to be abandoned is, is excess drainage easement. The applicant's requesting this area be abandoned in order to construct a playground for the community. Staff has also reviewed the applicant and is in, the application, and staff is in support of it. If Planning Commission concurs with the request, we request the following two conditions. If approved by City Council, applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary, including but not limited to any exhibits and legal descriptions for the legal department to prepare legal instruments to formally abandon the portion of the proposed easement in question. The legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department, and the applicant will also be responsible for recording these instruments, including payment of the recording fee. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions regarding this mandatory referral?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water? Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. All right, item C. Is a mandatory Is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a drainage easement located on property along South Billborough Avenue. SEC Inc. is the applicant. Mr. Aguilar, good evening.
Good evening, thank you Chair Jones and members of the Planning Commission. This next item on your agenda is a mandatory referral application to abandon a portion of an existing drainage easement. The Planning Commission is now being asked to consider the abandonment of a portion of an existing drainage easement on Lot 2 of the Murfreesboro Housing Authority in the Mercury Park subdivision. Lot 2 does have an approved site plan for the redevelopment of the property for 13 new single-family and two-family dwelling units. The drainage easement in question was dedicated via a final plan in 2023 for the Murfreesboro Housing Authority for that subdivision for lots 1 and 2. As you can see, the exhibit that Richard has pulled up is shown above. Per the attached correspondence, the applicant has stated the easement was dedicated for the detention pond. However, as stated in the correspondence, the entire easement was not necessary for the pond as the pond is not a regional feature and can partially be abandoned so that it can only serve Lot 2 of Mercury Park. The purpose for retaining a portion of the easement is for the reason on South Billborough Avenue, there is a proposed storm pipe that is there that will be kept and will serve the development and will be important to retain. The city engineer and project engineer have also reviewed this request and concurs that this abandonment is acceptable. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this request to City Council, subject to the following conditions. One, that if approved by City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary, including but not limited to, any exhibits and legal descriptions for the legal department to prepare legal exhibits to formally abandon the portion of the easement in question. Number two, that the modifications to the final easement area will be subject to review and approval by the city engineer. Three, that the legal instruments will be subject to final review and approval of the legal department. And the fourth condition, that the applicant will also be responsible for recording the instruments, including paying the recording fee. I'm here if you have any questions, and John Minor from SEC is here, should you all have any questions from them.
Okay, and so can I just understand this, so like this whole area, the dashed area we're looking at on the screen right now?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
To be abandoned?
Yes.
That was originally thought that, that, that whole area was needed for detention and it was a detention pond? And, or just a drainage easement?
So it was a drainage easement, there was a pond back there, and I'm going to look to John to kind of explain a little bit more the site plan. But from my basic understanding, during the site plan for the redevelopment of the site for Lot 2, there was that area back there that was really kind of put forth during the original development of that lot. And now with the redevelopment and the, the input of the pickleball court and everything, it really wasn't necessary to retain all that. That final plat that dedicated that was just kind of a mistake. It was just carried over, it was meant to not be recorded with it, but because it was not properly taken, it was not properly resolved during that final plat review, this is why they're here before you, because they, it is not needed. It's excess area, the only area that is really needed for that is again, that area where there's new infrastructure being put in, that new storm pipe that has been put. I think that covers everything, correct? John's shaking his head yes, so I'm covered.
Any other questions regarding this mandatory referral?
Seeing none, motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Next, we have item D. We've heard a little bit about it already through our public comments. This item is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a drainage easement located on property along Gresham Lane. Civil Infrastructure Associates on behalf of the Hensley Group is the applicant. Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you Chair Jones. This last item on our agenda tonight is for a mandatory referral request to abandon a portion of an existing drainage easement that is located for the Gresham Lane subdivision for Lot 2. This is a drainage easement that is for the new proposed lots 2 through 7 of the Gresham Lane subdivision, Section 2, as shown as the attached, if Richard can scroll down to show you that attached, that's been provided by the applicant, so he can show you that. The applicant is in the process of, as you're aware of, is in the process of developing this property in preparation for the subdivision that's coming in. The existing drainage easement was dedicated via a final plat in 1986 for the Glendale subdivision, a portion of which Lot 57 was incorporated into the Gresham Lane subdivision in 2022. Per the attached correspondence, the applicant has stated that the original purpose for the dedication of the drainage easement was to encompass the existing detention pond on Lot 57. However, the applicant has reconfigured the pond to be located on the proposed Lot 7, west of lots 2 through 6, and it will no longer require the requested easement abandonment area. The balance of the existing easement for the pond will remain in place with the recording of the final plat for Section 2 of the Gresham Lane subdivision. The city engineer and project engineer have also reviewed this request and they concurs that this abandonment is acceptable. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this request to City Council, subject on the following conditions. Condition one, if approved by City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary for the legal department to prepare legal instruments to formally abandon the portion of the easement in question. Two, that the legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department. Three, that the final plat for Gresham Lane subdivision, Section 2, shall be recorded simultaneously with the recording of the Quiklane deed abandoning the easement area. And the condition four, that the applicant will be responsible for recording the legal instruments, including the payment of the recording fee. As stated by the earlier comments and everything in presentation from staff, this is an ongoing review process, as I said, right now, the final plat is in under our review currently. That's why you're able to see the exhibit, so again, that is under review by staff right now. Katie Knoll, project engineer who has been a part of this project, is here for any questions that you may have regarding the drainage and those specific questions. Floodplain Administrator Jennifer Knopf is also here as well, should you have any questions pertaining to flooding or anything in those matters, but I am here for any questions you may have. And Nathan as well.
Good evening, Ms. Knopf, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening.
Make sure we know what's going on here.
So one, a couple of things I wanted to point out with this project was kind of in response to some of the comments that we had earlier. One of the reasons for the delay and why there was, they went, approached the board in '21 and then we didn't see any, they didn't see anything again until '24, was the original plan that was approved by Planning Commission for this project actually showed work on the Ag Lane, or the Lane-Agri Park property. The plans were revised and then all the work was moved out and into the public right-of-way. So that was part of the reason that the development team never went back to the county on that issue. So, when...
And can I ask, when it was moved into the public right-of-way, is that a county public right-of-way?
No, it is a city public, it's a city right-of-way, yes. The, what else do I have? So, the system that the new development is installing is replacing the county system that was not maintained properly. So that, the addition, some of the additional water is due to the lack of maintenance that was never done on the former system. They are replacing a clogged pipe across Gresham Lane, which is, it was a corrugated metal pipe. They are going back with a concrete pipe in the same location, it is not a larger size. It is the same size pipe, actually, it might be smaller, I think it is smaller. The same size, okay. And we are working very closely with the design team. They currently are working, yes, but we are still striving to get approved plans that does satisfy everybody's concerns. I actually got new revised plans at 4:15 today. Here's my drainage report, the new one, so there's still one more. We will not sign the plat for this project until obviously plans are approved and we are satisfied with everything. So the mandatory referral being recorded simultaneously with the plat, the staff will not sign the plat and allow it to be recorded until all concerns are addressed.
And would you say that's the normal procedure for these mandatory referrals that we're approving? When we approve, like we're, there's four tonight, when we're approving these, all the rest of them, is there still work that's going on on all those other three as well?
Yes.
It has to be taken care of before we actually get to the point that the new plat could be recorded or whatever the next document is?
I would say probably at least half of the mandatory referrals that we get, the system is being replaced with a system in kind. So there are some, like the Windwoods subdivision where it was for a playground. That wasn't actually a system on that particular part of that easement. So they were abandoning that easement for a different use. But most of the time, there'll be a drainage easement or a drainage pipe or something that goes across the lot and that's where they want to put the building. So a lot of times, they'll reroute that system, and we see that very commonly.
And, and so do you feel like that we have or you will have the documentation or whatever that is of concern to the Agri Park?
We are not there yet, but we absolutely will have it before this would be a complete process. At this point, we would ask that you approve, subject to staff comments. And those staff comments will ensure that everything is addressed and all of our concerns are addressed. And hopefully, the county's concerns are addressed as well.
So, and I'm just speaking for myself, if, if we chose not to approve, I don't see what the difference is. I mean, if we deferred it to the point that everybody's in agreement, the fact of the matter is, you're not going to do anything anyway until these plans or, or...
Correct.
From Civil...
Yes.
Are the way y'all want it. So, in deferring it, what, does that cause a problem? I mean, I guess that's my question.
That was going to be my question, so thank you.
Well, I would think it just means that then they, they might do this work and we, they don't know that we're going to approve it for them to go ahead with this, so why keep working on it all if we're not going to approve it? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I, I...
I, I understand, yeah, I, I get it, I do see where...
Preliminary plat was approved with the, basically knowing that this easement would be abandoned. So we've already approved that document. We're working towards construction plan approval. But we are, I, I am confident that we will get there. If we were to defer it till everything is done, then chances are that could hold up the development team on them getting their plat recorded and being able to start actually building homes on these properties.
So with the mandatory, with the abandonment and the new plan, there is no water going on to county property, correct?
There, there is water going on to county property today from this, from this area.
In the future plans that we're being worked on?
There will still be water going on to county property because they're not...
And I think the county should be involved with making the decision whether they want that water on their property in the future.
Well, the, the current drainage pattern has the water going on to county property. So therefore, it, it, the drainage pattern is remaining. It's taking a slightly different route with this project, but the water is still draining there today and it will remain to drain there tomorrow. Isn't the spot of disposition different though, where the water ends up? It, it's still being discharged today, that water eventually makes it to that pipe that crosses Gresham Lane at, at the, that entrance to Agri Park. And that's the pipe that they're replacing, but they're not doing any work beyond that. So it is still being that same ultimate discharge pipe. It does, did we get this word? No, portion of. I would pull up GIS and kind of show you, but we've got technical difficulties this evening.
And were you saying that the original plat that we approved was showing this as a drainage easement to be abandoned?
Yes, ma'am.
And so they've been doing this work towards trying to get it abandoned since then?
Yes. They've been doing a lot of excavating and earthwork on the pond. They are trying to main, they are maintaining existing storage. Nathan, did you want to add?
And the pond, the pond is on their property, not the county?
So there are two ponds in question. So there's the pond on the Gresham subdivision property, which is where they are actually doing the work. But it eventually does drain to the pond on the county property.
Katie, do you have the preliminary plat, if there's something on there that would help you?
I was going to go on GIS to kind of discuss the drainage patterns.
It's our understanding that, or my understanding at least, that the pond on the county property, Lane-Agri Park, is used for agricultural things and, and lessons and catching catfish, apparently, which I think sounds pretty cool. So what are the repercussions to that pond specifically?
So, right now, I can also say that that pond was also developed as to retain stormwater, I believe. We've got drainage maps that show this area draining to that when it was developed in 2007. So it's great that it has multiple uses, but that is one of the uses for that pond as well as stormwater. Can I just come over there? So right now, the water is leaving the pond, going between these houses, crossing Miranda Drive, and then it eventually makes its way to Braxton Bragg, crosses over, crosses over this drive and then drains to the pond down here. The current plan alters the pond drainage and the, the depth, because right now, it's about two feet deep. So this increases the pond depth and vault and then it drains to an outlet structure here. Right now, it doesn't have a very controlled outlet. It will drain down Gresham Lane, still across Braxton Bragg, and then still here. So the, the change is, to some extent, the pattern that this will provide a system that's much easier for the city to maintain in the future.
And so the amount of water, is it changing because of the change in the depth to the detention pond? The amount of water that will actually drain over to the county pond?
I'm going to let Nathan probably...
Okay.
Good evening, my name's Nathan Nelson, I'm with Civil Infrastructure Associates. I'm the engineer of record for Gresham Lane subdivision. So the existing pond is an existing retention pond. Like Katie said, it has not been maintained in a number of years and therefore does not function. It backs up considerably even under small storm events. And the route that she was showing where it crosses Miranda Drive, that is a backup condition. It's not, the original design of that pond was never to back up and cross Miranda Drive at that location. It was intended to spill out into Gresham Lane and follow the route that we are proposing. Now, with revised calculations, Katie has been adamant about making sure that we are addressing every single thing that the city requires. And so we are reducing peak flows coming from the site. We are, we are increasing volume retained, so less volume is going to go on to Lane-Agri Park, which Rutherford County Engineering has informed us is a volume-sensitive pond. So we are in an effort to not increase that volume, we are retaining more. If it is Lane-Agri Park's desire to have more or a certain amount of additional volume, we can certainly work that out. That is just a change in how much excavation we do on the Gresham Lane pond. So, is that...
And can I ask, so the, the drain, the drainage easement that, where it's going to go down Gresham Lane, is that actually an underground pipe or is that like a drainage ditch type easement?
It, it is an underground pipe. And so the original design of that subdivision back in the 1980s had corrugated metal pipes that were running down Gresham Lane. I've spoken with different city officials and they have said that they've had inspectors trying to go out and jet out those existing pipes to daylight them because that, when, when our company went out and surveyed, they're, they're only able to find one end of several different pipes. And so several different pipes were clogged. And so what we're doing is trying to basically put back the original condition when the surrounding subdivision that was built in 1980s. that was built in 1980s, back to that original condition, and not cause more flow on Lane-Agri Park.
So I'm assuming that the county's engineer has specified, I'm asking a question here, specified what they're, may not like about the design or the changes. Is that, is that what has caused the changes to happen? It sounds like there's been three iterations in a matter of a short period of time.
So, yes, there have been a number of iterations. The original design, as Katie mentioned, we had, our pipes were actually connecting onto Lane-Agri Park property. And so whenever that went through preliminary plat review, that was approved pending staff comments, and one of those staff comments was, in order for us to continue on, we had to get an easement from Lane-Agri Park. This was in 2021. This is when that came through. So we would have to get a consent to drain and a drainage easement from Lane-Agri Park. That was the reason we went to that, I believe it was June 2021, board meeting. After, after that meeting, we presented what the board, Lane-Agri Park Board, told us to bring what our designs, what we would like to do, try to work something out. I brought that to the developer at that time, and the project was simply put on hold. And it was put on hold up until about summer of last year, when a new developer bought the property and bought the project. So, and we, we looked at the design again, after going through the review process, construction plan review process. We also, I think, went back through Planning Commission to get a new approval for the preliminary plat. And so we took that, and, but the new construction plan design, now know what we were able to make work, staying within the public right of way of Gresham Lane, which is city right of way. And so now that was the reason for not, there was no, there's no longer a need to get a consent to drain to, or from Lane-Agri Park and the board there, because there's no easement. Now, looking back, there's, they have requested some additional look at the calculations, and we've gone back through and tried to excavate more, and that's what the developer, the contractor is doing now, is excavating more out of the Gresham Lane pond to prevent and to meet the new requirements, or to prevent additional volume and meet the new requirements that the city has imposed.
Look, I don't necessarily have a problem with an abandonment of the easement, but I think the county does need to be involved, because it involves them, and if it involves the county, that means it involves all of us. We live in the county. We're county taxpayers. So I'm going to make a motion to defer it, because it doesn't sound like there's any damage in deferring it.
And, and I don't disagree with Mr. Wright's comments. I, I would say, too, it sounds like, Ms. Knoll, you've got another iteration like today that they haven't seen yet, and I don't know why, if they can't look at it in the next two weeks, we can't take this up again in two weeks, so that the developer is not in a situation that it's that much of a delay.
That's why I'm, I agree.
And obviously, there's a lot of concern.
Yeah.
So I would second that motion.
Great. If we're
For deferment?
Going to a motion to defer, do we need to, you know, I don't want to hold it to two weeks, though. I mean, so, do we put a timeframe, not put a timeframe? What do we need to do there, Mr. Hankins?
I think the, the commission has discretion on, on the amount of time that you want to put, because this, this isn't like a, a plat submission or anything like that, where there's a shot clock on the amount of time that we have. So you could defer it, you know, to the next regular meeting. You could defer it for 30 days to bring it back, you know, at any point within there. You could theoretically even defer it indefinitely. I think based on what we're hearing tonight, I wouldn't recommend deferring it indefinitely. But I think you do have some flexibility on, on what you, you set there. Also, I just, I wanted to make sure that we're, that everyone has a clear understanding of what the jurisdiction and authority is here, that it is, you know, that this property is all within the city's jurisdiction. And the Planning Commission's function here is to make a recommendation based on what is in the interest of the city regarding stormwater management and the use of this drainage easement. The county in this situation with Lane-Agri Park is, you know, an important neighbor to the city, but their interest in this area is proprietary, not governmental. So they are, they are, they are an interested neighbor in this case.
I don't disagree with that at all. And like I said, I have no problem doing the abandonment. I just want there to be more, all the information on the table. And also the fact that it's not working as it was designed right now. So when it, maybe it's restored back to its original intended purpose, but what does that look like?
Yeah.
Because things are a lot different now.
I want to say 30 days, and if they want to bring it back in two weeks, if all the information's back in two weeks, they can bring it back in two weeks.
And they want the result of their independent
Right.
study as well. So that's enough time for that.
So, Mr. Wright, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
We have a motion to defer for 30 days?
Second.
And there was a second, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any other staff reports or any other business tonight?
We do not, Chair Jones.
Okay, all right. If not, then we stand adjourned. And thank you to everybody that came out tonight. Thanks for all the extra help from the legal teams. Appreciate it.